Did you?
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Franklin Regional School Board Director's Committee, the whole meeting for Monday, June 17th, 2024. Roll call, Ms. Wolf.
Mr. Rosalina.
Here.
Mr. Fallett.
Present.
Mr. Kuzlosky.
Here.
Mrs. Bucera.
Here.
Mr. Weinman.
Here.
Mr. Zebraak.
Here.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey.
Here.
Mr. Karmski.
Here.
All present.
All right. And we'll turn it over to Dr. Pirino for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Happy summer. I'm really excited this evening because every month we bring students and staff to the board to talk about great things that are happening, their accomplishments, types of learning that they are engaged in in school and outside of school. Tonight, we have a very special presentation in regard to a student who completed an apprenticeship program that led to employment. And so I'm not going to talk a lot about it because I'm going to let Mr. Stanzak and the student and some of our partners talk this evening, but it's a tremendous opportunity and I can't wait for you to hear about it. Mr. Stanzak.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for that introduction, Dr. P. I hope everybody had a nice weekend and happy Father's Day to all the fathers who are in the room. Tonight, mostly, I want to celebrate the accomplishments for our recent graduate, Noah Rogers. He graduated from Franklin Regional, of course, a couple weeks ago, and he also is the first Franklin Regional student to successfully participate in and complete the pre-apprenticeship program through the German-American Chamber of Commerce. So I want to give him some accolades tonight and let him explain what his experience was like, but I also want to make sure that our community is aware of this opportunity that's available to our students and something that I would like to hopefully open up to more and more of our students instead of just one who is graduating this year. So we have Noah Rogers here. I think that we'll have you kind of be our capstone and our grand finale to talk about your experience, but before you get into your experience, we also have Rachel Maurer here, who is the president of the German-American Chamber of Commerce for Western Pennsylvania. And Rachel, if you could please just explain the program a little bit, I think that would be very helpful to, as a good background, to hearing about Noah's experience and then giving you opportunities to ask us questions. So Rachel Maurer, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much for this opportunity, and I will keep it as short as possible just because I think the biggest information and success is really going to be through Noah and his experience and also what he will be doing here soon. So, but just to give you a little bit of context behind what we do, I do run the German-American Chamber of Commerce, and I think one of the first things I let Noah know and our students is that while I highly support the German language, it is not a requirement for our program. But we, as the German Chamber in Germany, that it's the Chamber of Commerce, it's the best English translation that we have, they are actually responsible for all of the apprenticeship programs in Germany. So the 350-plus German apprenticeship programs, the curriculum, the testing, working with the schools, working with the companies, doing the train-the-trainer, and then ultimately the test that is developed every year with the German apprentices. We actually have a license to do that test. We translate it into English, so Noah will be getting the German test, but in English. And if he passes that, he actually gets the global certification. And so in his program, he's, it's what we call mechatronics, is what Westmoreland County Community College, which we're partnered with here, calls a robotics technician. The challenge, but also opportunity that mechatronics has is that mechatronics is by far one of our leading apprenticeship programs because it covers all the skill sets. So mechanical, electrical, computer programming, PLCs, hydraulics, pneumatics, really, it's a very high-skilled training program that allows students to have careers in robotics, automation, maintenance. They can go on and get their bachelor's to get in mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, mechatronics. There are a lot of different pathways through this program. We actually have four registered apprenticeship programs, but mechatronics is our most popular one just because industry, that's the highest demand. But we also have a polymer technician, a sales engineering, which is a business degree with sales and technical expertise, and then also CAD/CAM technical designer. And our fifth one coming up in the summer will be the EV auto technician. And while we love the fact that, you know, they get the German global certification, we are registered with the Department of Labor, so they get their journeyman certification through this program, and we are partnered with the community college, so all the classroom training is through the community college. It's all college-credited, and they get their associate's degree. What's great about this is that in this apprenticeship program, they're hired full-time, the tuition is covered, the books are covered, they get paid while they're at school, they also get paid while they're doing the on-the-job training, so they are paid full-time with benefits, and they get in the end a job through the, out the program. And also, at the end, they have job security along with the degree, and then they have other pathways if they want to continue on. So one of our other superintendents, and I steal this all the time from him, but it's true, it's multiple pathways with no dead ends, and that's really what we're trying to do with our apprenticeship program. And so with that, and I can leave a few wonderful flyers for you that gives a little bit of a background behind that, but really, you know, working with our school district, we're, of course, in Westmoreland County, but in several other counties, we have 40-plus companies in this cohort, allowing students to really get to choose behind what program they want to do, what type of career pathway they want to go into. But what's also nice is, you know, as great as I want to present or these flyers can cover this, it's really, you know, if I talked to Noah before he was going into his senior year, and as great as I think I've explained this, the biggest thing is it's hard for them to understand if this is something they want to do. And so we have a registered pre-apprenticeship program where we have them go see the companies, take a tour, and then they can select more than one if they want to, or if they want to just focus in on one employer. They get a paid internship throughout their senior year, and we have a national certification as well to help with some of the technical skill sets. And so it's really ultimately to help them make a decision so that when Noah was getting close to graduation, he has already been at the company, he was getting paid to be at this company, and really understand what does the mechatronics, what does it do, what does that company, what does it look like to work at this company, so that when we asked him, "Do you want to go into the apprenticeship program?", he knew his answer. So that is ultimately the goal behind our pre-apprenticeship program. Now, some students will go through and realize this isn't a good fit, and that's okay, too. We value the noes as much as the yeses, but really getting to try these career pathways is really key to helping make really concrete the best decision for those students. So with that, I'll ask, I'll be here to answer any questions. I'll also leave some flyers here, but the most important part, I think, is to turn it over to Noah to explain the experience.
Good afternoon. I am Noah Rogers. So for a bit of a brief history on my experience, starting last year, I was looking for an internship in welding, and then Mr. Stanzak had shown me this opportunity that Mrs. Maurer had offered to our school, and that was through the German-American Chamber of Commerce. Now, I am in the field of mechatronics, which is more of hands-on with machines like grinding, welding, and I do sandblasting currently. You can also work with other machines that, sorry, you work with other machines throughout the buildings that we can work at. So there's CTC machines, which you can program, and also grind with the building I'm at right now. So whenever this first started last year, Mr. Stanzak and I had started contacting Mrs. Maurer about this, and we had talked a couple times, and I went over the summer to a couple different companies and interviewed with them. There were four different companies in total, and decided to go with General Carbide because that felt like the right fit. And so throughout the, my senior year, I had worked in a couple different departments at General Carbide with laser engraving, sandblasting, surface grinding, and OD grinding. And recently, I had a signing day, so I am currently set in stone to work at General Carbide for the next couple years. And starting in the fall, I will be going to WACC for my associate's degree in robotics technicians. And as a part of my apprenticeship, I have to complete a course called MT1, which is Mechanical Technician I Course, and it's an online course, so it's very flexible, and Mrs. Maurer has been very helpful with setting that up for me. And it's very flexible with my schedule because I've been, I put it off whenever I started doing finals because of projects and stuff, and then it's just something I can get right back into. And also with my company, it was very flexible throughout my schedule with extracurriculars, and then I just had my classes in the morning, and I'd go to work in the afternoons. Any questions? Sorry, that was quick.
I would, well, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
And what an inspiration you are. And the first thing I'm thinking of is, are you going to come back and mentor some of our children, our students in the future, you know, to help them with their path? Because this is just such an incredible success story, and I think that you would make an incredible mentor to the students coming through.
I really appreciate that. And to answer your question, I was actually talking to Mr. Stanzak earlier about saying I could come back and do like a brief, I guess, history about what I did, and also that there are more than just what I was doing now, because there's also, like Rachel said earlier, with the sales fields and just in the field alone I was doing, there's also something called CAM and CAD, which is more computer-based and not just machine-based. But yeah, definitely, if I, once I get more higher up in what I'm doing now and get a better understanding, I would love to come back and help other students.
I'd just like to ask a little bit, or ask you to expand a little bit, on a lot of times, there's so many different opportunities and options for our students to explore, but it's in a very short amount of time. How did you get, can you explain a little bit better how you got exposed to this, when you realized that this is what I'm going to do during this time and use this as my avenue to explore a career field, and how beneficial it was so that other students or parents that are listening to this might be able to say, oh, well, this is the time that we should think about this or look into this opportunity?
So I had gotten exposed to this my junior year, and I really always wanted to do something with, working with my hands, because I'm not much of a sitting-at-a-desk-type person. I like to work in like the field, so to say, or like on a shop floor. Granted, I never went to trade school, but once I heard about this opportunity, I was ecstatic, to say the least, and I wanted to get into, like I said, more with something with working hands-on. And so when I got more into this and more in-depth, that's when I realized, whenever I started touring the different companies, I realized this is something I wanted to do because it was very, it's intellectual, but also hands-on, so it's not just like, oh, I'm just going to be doing the same thing every day, and it's going to be like a endless cycle. It's, you're working on different projects throughout months, throughout weeks, throughout days, and you can also, and it's also the satisfaction of knowing that what you're making is also like either going to be the final product or going to work for something bigger. So for instance, like, we work with some ammunition moldings, and like, well, General Carbide's main thing is what they're going to enforce their tooling, is what they like to say, so like agriculture stuff, like we build teeth that go on tractors and whatnot. And it's, the building that I'm in is the finishing building, so we do basically all like the final preforms and stuff, and then we do polishing and grinding and sandblasting and whatnot. But I think what really got me into it was just knowing that I'd be able to work with my hands and I just see the satisfaction of a final product, so.
So would you say this program has helped you find a path, that you were looking to find a fit for yourself personally, as you were saying, kind of describing yourself a little bit, or did it help you kind of distill down and just find an employer and a place to work and, you know, specifically what you wanted to do, or did it actually help you kind of find your path of where you wanted to be as you were going through high school?
I guess a bit of both, because as most people are in my age range, I'd like to say it would be kind of not necessarily lost, but still like seeking for what they're interested in. And so as I got to grow throughout the apprenticeship, I found more things that I liked to be interested in and more things like with certain skills I wanted to develop. So that is also part of the reason I want to go on into the schooling is develop like the programming skills to work with CTC machine, or CNC machines, and all the other stuff that General Carbide and the apprenticeship has to offer.
Great. Good luck with it all.
Thank you.
No, I have one, I actually have one question. Talk to us about what your impressions were of manufacturing?
So.
And then what the reality of manufacturing is.
So I guess my impression was that original, so back in my sophomore year, I did researching on welding for my career paper, and that's what kind of started this whole snowball effect, I guess, if you will. And so I, my first impression was, oh, I'm just going to be working like outside or like indoors on the same thing over and over again, and it's kind of just, like I said earlier about that never-ending cycle. And then the reality of it is that there is, there is so much more to manufacturing in the right opportunities and in the right places, where it's not just you're doing the same thing over and over again. You can constantly learn new things, there's constantly like a different challenge you can figure out, and so it never really just gets boring. It's an intellectual challenge, but also really nice to just be, you know, inbound to the nitty-gritty part of it, and it's not just, oh, I have a headache, and because it's so boring or because it doesn't feel like you can fix it, it's just, yeah.
Now, from a, talk about the environment.
At like work or?
The work environment, in terms of what's the physical environment like inside the shop?
So inside my shop, it is very nice, very clean, very organized. We, I don't know what the actual code is called, but we have like a very specific organizing code, and then we get audited every year, too, because there are certain companies that we work with that want us to be audited, so everything's very uptight to a degree, but everybody that, the, my coworkers are very nice and helpful with questions I have, and everybody there is always willing to help as long as you go looking for it. And the, the building itself is, like I said, very clean, they have like base, almost zero safety risks, like they are making sure that you're taken care of while you're working there, and yeah.
Have you always been mechanically inclined? Or did you discover that you?
I kind of just discovered it. Like, I mean, I liked, I used to play with Legos a lot as a kid, and even like later in like middle school and still in high school, my freshman and sophomore year, like I like to, like I said, work a lot with my hands, but yeah, I guess it's kind of just something I fell upon.
Noah, congratulations.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks again, everybody, for your time. If you have any questions about the German-American Chamber of Commerce, I'd be happy to answer any questions and put you in touch with Noah and Rachel. So hopefully, this is a program we can build. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. That concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Pirino. We will move on to public comments. First, Maureen Rossi.
Maureen Rossi, 185 Statler Drive in Delmont. And I'm here to address the vote later this evening for the open position for the school board. Before I get started, I'd like to take a second to thank, to recognize the years of service of Herb Yingling to the community, and I can think of no greater replacement to fill his position than Amy Sheridan. Her commitment to the school district has been shown by volunteering countless hours for the band, robotics, vision screenings for Pre-K, and for being a member of the Franklin Comprehensive Planning Committee. Her commitment to the board has been supported by her being fixture in the audience of the school board meetings for about the past two or three years. I think from what I've seen on TV, it's usually right about here. And I feel that she can jump right into the vacated position and not miss a beat. She knows the countless hours the school board member has put in and is not only willing to take on these responsibilities, but is excited, is excited to do what is right for the students, the district, and the community. Please consider her for the vacated position. Thank you for your time today and all of the dedication you provide to the community.
Thank you. Next, is it Amy Heber?
Hi, my name is Amy Heber, 6954 Berkshire Drive Export. I am a friend, I'm a parent of two Franklin Regional graduates and a friend of Amy Sheridan. I can think of no better person to fill the very big shoes left by Herb Yingling on the school board than Amy Sheridan. I know you're familiar with Amy because she comes to almost every meeting. She is well-informed and could easily step into the role. She's been an active parent volunteer at Franklin Regional and would be a valuable asset to the board as a parent with a current high school student. I want Amy to make thoughtful decisions based on what is best for students in our school district. Thank you for considering her to take on this important role.
Thank you. Next, Helen Elliott.
Hi, Helen Elliott, 3166 Chestnut Street in Murraysville. Well, I'm going to change the topic a little bit. I wanted to know when the next curriculum meeting might be since the last one got canceled. So I hope we learn that. Also, I'd like to know, when is the eyesore of the heritage property going to be cleared away? I live very close to there, just basically pretty much across the street from it and can see it out my windows, and it is a horrible eyesore, and it's been sitting there, and I don't see any vehicles doing anything. And so that's my second question there. And I would like to speak in support of Dave Murphy. I would like for him very much to fill the role of the absent place on the school board. I think he's a man of integrity, and he received the high number of votes that he did in the last election, so that means the community was looking to have him in place. And so I am in favor of Dave Murphy filling that role. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Jamie Ling.
Hi, Jamie Ling, 3501 Burnett Drive, Murraysville. So I'm not actually here to stump for any candidates tonight, so you can breathe a sigh of relief. I am here, actually, though, to talk about the process of picking the responders to the RFP. I don't know if I just missed it, I did ask some of my friends, but nobody seems to have seen anything published about who responded to the RFP that was put out for transparency for the public. I see that in the committee of the whole, there's nothing under the agenda items for any discussion amongst you for the candidates that are running, and that in the regular board meeting, it is not up until the agenda item G1. So as you well know, school director is an elected representative political position. You're a part of a representative republic. The public has already spoken, I'm just going to state a fact. Dave Murphy came in second after Herb for the two-year term that he ran for by 58 votes. He ran, he was vetted, and he has a lot of public support. Those are just facts. The RFP closed, I believe, the end of May, right? May 30th? Is that correct?
Yeah, 31st.
What was it? May 31st? Okay. I know there's no policy that prevents a nomination of any additional person at a regular board meeting, but is this really the way a school board, as a representative republic, should work? Candidates that are running for position, whether that be in a certified election, response to an RFP, or nominated, should be announced to the public for full transparency, so the public has a chance to weigh in. I'm going to say again, agenda item G1 does not take place until after all public comment has commenced. So is this really how you want to represent your constituents? Or is this a power play to stack the deck for the magic number five? Thank you.
Next, Jeanette Pavlik.
Good evening. Jeanette Pavlik, 4200 Colonial Drive, Murraysville. I sent everyone an email, or most everyone, I'm sure you received other emails, and I'm here to support Dave Murphy. He's worked with Republican Committee for many years, and he's done a great job helping us out. He's, he was elected as the candidate and was, got a lot of votes, and I think he should be in the position that you replace Herb Yingling with him. Thank you.
And Elaine Kawati? Am I saying that correctly? Okay.
I'm at 4046 Gun Club Road in Murraysville, and I am just here to support Dave Murphy. I know Dave Murphy was, was our nominee, and he worked very, very hard for the position that Herb Yingling won, and it was 58 votes. So I am in for nominating him for the school board. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments. Any solicitor comments?
No comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to consent agenda items. I will start with number one, Mr. Folvio, the WIU Discovery Education and Mystery Science Purchase Letter of Intent.
Yes, so you will see later on in the agenda, number 10, is the WIU Master Services Agreement that Mr. Perry will present. This purchase letter of intent was pulled out of that Master Services Agreement as they, the WIU waited for the pricing from Discovery Ed. Discovery Ed is a service that we have used for many years and actually is the organization that provided the award to our intermediate school this past year for their work. So we are asking for a three-year locked-in agreement for that pricing, and in addition to that, we will be adding on the Mystery Science, which was approved previously this school year, and that is also a three-year locked-in agreement for, so Discovery Ed is for all four buildings. On that second page, you see Mystery Science is for the intermediate and the primary schools, and that pricing structure is by enrollment.
Open up for any questions or comments from the board from Mr. Folvio. All right. We'll move on to number two, Mr. Scherkengoss, Microsoft ESS Agreement.
Yes, good evening. I have two items. The first item is a Microsoft ESS Agreement. This is our annual Microsoft Licensing, Volume Licensing Agreement that gives us access to all the Microsoft Suite operating system and Office applications. Second item is laptops for a high school lab for the Visabody Program. The laptops they current, currently have will not support the program, and we're ordering new laptops for that program specifically.
I'll go back to number two first. Any questions on number two from Mr. Scherkengoss?
Yes, I just wanted to know how you, did you compare this with the?
Yes, I just wanted to know, did you compare this with the Google Docs and the Google Excel, you know, the Google options compared to the Microsoft, and what were your findings?
Yes, mainly, we have a lot of teacher... All the teacher and the staff use Microsoft, and a lot of our programs are developed in Microsoft Publisher. It doesn't convert to Google Documents for the teachers, so it makes it rather difficult without the Microsoft for the teachers. And we get this through the ESS Agreement, which is a statewide agreement for all school districts.
Any additional questions on the Microsoft?
How did the cost compare to last year?
I think it went up maybe a thousand bucks. It wasn't much.
Thank you.
Any more questions on the Microsoft? Any questions on the laptops? The senior high.
Same question there. Like, what's the spend?
Actually, it went down. I think we... I don't recall, but we were paying over a thousand dollars for laptops in the past, but I bought them in a while. Their laptops, Windows laptops are a little bit cheaper than they used to be.
Nice. Thank you.
Brad, you're bringing these items to us. We've approved them in the capital budget.
Correct.
So these are all within that technology?
Our budget, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Furniture replacement, number four.
Again, this was approved as part of the capital budget. It's the furniture replacement that we discussed along the way, including the addition of furniture due to increased class sizes and increased sections due to enrollment increases at the intermediate school, as well as kidney tables for our primary school to promote small group instruction, and the replacement of some conference tables at the middle school, and the addition of a table at the central office or administration building.
Any questions on the furniture replacement? All right, Mr. Perry, next five through eight. We'll start with the appointments and contracts.
Good evening. This first item is the annual approval of the school district solicitor, special education counsel, and school dentist. I think one item to note, after his first year serving as the school dentist, Dr. Di Maria has agreed to provide that service free of charge in the future. So students needing the dental exam for school requirements will no longer incur costs for the district.
Any questions from Mr. Perry? Are you taking credit for those negotiations?
No, he offered that without us having to arm wrestle over the $7 per exam that was... has been charged since I've been here, so...
Nobody else knows that, though.
They do now.
I only take credit when it's due.
Yeah.
The next item, budget transfers for the month. General fund transfers of $1,030,4892. Athletic fund transfers of $18,326.57. These numbers are obviously larger than what we typically see on a monthly basis as we approach year end. One of the items that drives this are outside placement tuitions, which are frequently funded by other funding sources that we don't exactly know when we put the budget together the year in advance. So many of those are tuitions that are being funded through IDEA rather than local dollars, so it's just a reclassification of line items.
Any questions on the budget transfers? Preapproval for July bills?
Similar to what we do in December, each July, we ask for a preapproval of the July list of bills since there is no meeting in July. So those bills will be sent to the board on July 11th for your review. We ask if you have any questions to contact me or my office by July 15th, and we'll be planning to distribute payments on the 16th.
Any questions on the July bills? Okay, bill paying resolution.
Yes, again, this is an annual resolution that we asked the board to pass that just gives us the authority to pay bills as they become due, if due dates fall between board meetings and they're not able to be presented as an unpaid bill. So this is the section of invoices that you see listed as paid bills on that monthly list of bills, just items that haven't been before the board yet but had due dates that required payment before the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Number nine, workers' comp package, auto equipment, educators, legal liability, and umbrella insurance coverage.
Again, an annual approval of our district-wide insurances. As Mr. Krimsky listed there, this includes things such as workers' comp, property liability coverages. We are recommending that we stick with all the incumbent carriers, so that's UPMC Health Benefits for our workers' comp, CM Regent for all the other lines of coverage.
Can you give the people an idea of what our claims history has been the last few years? Or I see it went up 5%, I guess?
Yeah, in combination, all the lines of coverage were up about 5%, which is actually much more favorable than what we were expecting. Workers' comp in particular was about a 3% increase. We've seen, you know, over the almost 15 years that I've been there, there have been some years that have had spike claims, one or two significant lost time. But over the last five years, which are a factor in our rates right now, we've actually had a pretty strong claims history. Our experience mod has gone down. Some of those other lines of coverage, we've had a few property claims here and there over the years, nothing significant. But just the insurance market as a whole, if you look at that across the state, districts were getting renewals of around 20% or greater, or perhaps being non-renewed for the first time, just as there are larger claims across the country. It's a very difficult market right now. So again, nothing that... We really did, we had the benefit of, you know, that heritage building coming down was less property that we have to cover on a go-forward basis, so that helped lower what our increase could have otherwise been, just to maintain the same levels of coverage, but not necessarily based on experience, just the market as a whole.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? And lastly, the WIU Master Service Agreement.
Yes, this is a new process for the WIU. They're requesting that each member district complete this Master Service Agreement. It brings them in line with process and procedures of some of the other local intermediate units, and gives them an opportunity to really plan for the staffing that they need to provide the services that districts intend on using. So their goal is to have this out a little bit earlier in the spring next year, improve the process as it's developed. But really, no changes in the services that we're expecting to utilize through the IU. We have a few students that participate in programs there. We receive some itinerant hearing and audiology services. As you heard earlier tonight, the Discovery Education. We participate in joint purchasing. All these types of items are things that we plan on continuing using. And if we were to need to expand the services that we would use through the WIU, we'll be bringing a modification form for board approval in the future.
Any questions from Mr. Perry?
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Smith, the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, MOU.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm going to pack away from the microphone a little bit. It's kind of hot. So we're looking for approval for the AIU Title III Consortium. This would be our second year. These funding gives us some opportunity for professional development, resources, materials to support our EL population and our staff that supports them. Also looking at purchasing technology and other supplies, and having access to conferences to support the growth for our staff and students in ESL. Any questions?
What was your...
Josh, sorry.
What's your general feedback? You said it's the second year, so we're renewing. What's your feedback after the first year?
Yeah, it's been absolutely great to get the support from the AIU. They have such a robust offering of materials, conferences, professional development for myself and our liaison brand, Mrs. Sabrina, down the intermediate and primary building. You'll see a couple of the names on the agreement there, Dr. Noys and Jill Santa. They're just so accessible and so supportive, so really looking forward to continuing that relationship.
Can you give an example, just a quick one, of what program you used from this that you felt impacted year for you?
The one that comes off the top of my head is probably supplemental material or resource that we use, Imagine Learning. So it gave Mrs. Sabrina another kind of tool in her toolbox to use with her students at the intermediate, and that was at one point recommended from the AIU and the consortium. So we were able to pilot it on a prorated utilizing the funding from the Title III Consortium, and we've seen some positive feedback with that with the students and obviously with the support of Mrs. Sabrina.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Dr. Delp, disposal of chemistry textbooks.
Good evening, everyone. The first item I bring to you this evening is to seek approval for the disposal of the following chemistry textbooks. There are 23 books that are 24 years old, outdated, and they're no longer used in instructional purposes.
Any questions on that? All right, Frontline Analytics.
Yes, we are seeking approval for the purchase of Frontline's comparative analytics program for the upcoming school year. It is a data analytics program that allows you to comprehensively look at your financial, operational, personnel assessment data across any reportable category that is given to PDE. We were able to access that and look at that data comprehensively, not student identifiable, but we were able to look at that data both internally as well as comparatively across all of the school districts within the state of Pennsylvania.
We're not uploading any of our information or data from this program to the PDE. This is internal use only.
This is information that we must submit to PDE on an annual basis through PIMS. So PIMS reporting, our budgetary process, all of that information is requested by PDE and required by PDE. So this is no additional information. This is no voluntarily provided information, but this is information that we are required to provide to PDE on an annual basis.
So we're going to reroute the information through this program as opposed to how we're doing it now?
So currently, we have... We submit this information, but we do not have a repository to be able to extract that information and do cross comparisons between categories. So this allows us to, yes, any information is now housed in a singular repository that we can now do a deeper analysis of trends of expenses down to operational costs.
And nobody else has access to this program? The PDE doesn't have access to our program. We simply upload the information that they need in the fields that they need.
This is the analytical tool to compare across various districts, correct?
Correct. So this isn't a PDE program. This is a program through our frontline program that we currently use for many other resources, HR-related absenteeism, professional development, hiring. And so this is an extension. It used to be another program. Frontline has purchased it and made it much more reasonable for us to be able to make this a possible resource for us, to be able to go much more deeply into the data analytics of our operations over multiple years and between cohorts. If you wanted to establish a cohort of schools as a comparator group, you can actually do that and do a cross-analysis as it relates to budgetary expenditures, personnel trends, data on assessments. So all of that information that is accessible to PDE is able to look at it from an aggregate standpoint across these districts.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, and personnel agenda.
And the last item I have is seeking your approval of the personnel items to be provisionally approved upon submission of appropriate documentation, such as physical TBD tests, current child abuse, and other clearances, as well as any other documents required by PA School Code.
Any questions on personnel? Thank you, Dr. Delp. Mr. Perry, the two real call agenda items.
Lou, again, the first item I have is the recommendation for the final general fund budget for the 24-25 school year. This is a budget having expenditures of $68,961,673 and revenues of $68,404,275, with $557,398 coming from the unassigned fund balance. Property taxes in this budget would be assessed at 111.86 mils, which is a 3.5 mil increase or 3.23%. All other tax rates would remain unchanged. Just a few items to note, since the proposed final budget was adopted at the May board meeting, expenditures have decreased approximately $80,000, primarily resulting from those insurance quotes. The actual quotes came in lower than what we had previously been estimating. Revenues increased approximately $5,000. We were able to increase our projection for earned income tax collections, as well as transportation subsidy from the state. Unfortunately, our federal subsidies for our title programs, we received those final allocations, and they were decreasing, so that partially offset the increases for earned income taxes and transportation subsidy. Any questions on the final general fund budget?
Just to reconfirm, you said we did receive the information from state and federal as what we're receiving?
Just the federal, not the state. We still have very little insight as to what that final Commonwealth budget will look like. Each chamber has kind of introduced their own legislation, and they're... The House is very consistent with what Governor Shapiro outlined in February, and the Senate has a very different version as to how to utilize the large surplus in the state coffers and what type of education legislation might be tied up within that final budget. So right now, what we have budgeted is what Governor Shapiro outlined, which I would say is probably worst case for our district, because as we mentioned when we went over the proposed final budget in May, the largest pieces of education funding are around that adequacy gap and tax supplement, and we are not scheduled to receive either one of those. We've included 100% of the base, basic education funding that was included in his budget, which was $200 million, which is actually significantly less than what has been included in that BEF portion in the past few years. So I feel it's probably safe to include that amount within our budget, and we'll see where and when is probably the biggest question mark right now if final state budget gets passed, but I don't expect that to be by the June 30 deadline.
Now, is that... And I think I asked this last month, too. I apologize, but does that happen every year that we're in this case?
Not every year, but more often than not.
Okay. And are we required to submit a budget by June per the state?
Yes, we are. School Code requires us to.
The school code requires that we submit a budget without the state doing their end of the bargain by giving us notification of what they're supposed to provide us?
That is correct.
But we don't have to... We cannot abstain or delay our budget because they've not provided us the necessary input to determine our budget?
If we do, we'd be in violation of school code.
Are they in violation currently? I mean, if you know the answer, this is an honest question. I'm not...
Technically, by statute, perhaps, but I'm not sure what recourse there is.
So for what you've estimated from the state, we shouldn't end up more in the negative? You've taken a very conservative estimate from what we expect to receive.
I would say realistic. You know, I'm going to lean to the side of conservative. I don't foresee it being worse than what we got, or than what we've included in here. But I don't think it's going to be dramatically different either.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Prino, and I don't know if this is the right question direct to you, but do we have a way of feeding back to the state? I mean, from my perspective, on a personal budget pers... You know, I'm not going to estimate a budget if I don't know what my inputs are, my income and outgoing. Is there a way we can give that feedback back to the state to say, hey, get your stuff together so we can get our stuff together?
Not only do we do that, but every school in the Commonwealth does it. It's actually one of the ma... And I'm not being funny. It's actually one of the major frustrations everyone has because it's a guess and check, and I'm not into wild guesses with this. But it seems when they do this, I mean, sometimes it goes... You'll be past first of the year, and they still won't have a budget.
Thank you.
Did just, if you would, explain the proposed tax increase versus the ceiling. Could you just tell the public a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, as I mentioned, we were recommending a 3.5 mil increase. The Act One index this year is 5.3%, which would allow up to a 5.74 mil increase. So we're at about 60% of what would be available. And similarly, that's kind of where we've been over the last three years or so. We've come in below that Act One index. As Mr. Krimsky pointed out at the last board meeting, 22-23, the allowable increase was 3.5. 2223, the allowable increase was 3.52 mils. The adopted budget included 2.75. Last year, the allowable increase was 4.36 mils. The adopted budget included 2. So as I said, over those last three years, we've been about 60% of what was available under Act One, which is the inflationary index kind of outlined within school code. And similarly, if you look at inflation measured by CPI over the last five, 10, or 15 years, there's a page in the packet, page 64, that kind of provides our millage history. Over the last five years, our millage has gone up 2.67% on average, whereas inflation has been at 4.17%. Over 10 years, 2.37% for the tax increase, 2.82% for inflation. So obviously inflation has spiked within the last five years, but under any one of those periods, our increases have been less than inflation.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? And then the last, Homestead and Farmstead exclusion resolution?
This is the annual Homestead-Farmstead resolution. So this is the portion of the real estate tax bill that gets excluded for Homestead-Farmstead properties. Based on the proposed millage rate, $196.31 would be excluded from those tax bills this year. And that is $38.10 greater than the excluded amount from the prior year. And that's all based on the state gaming revenues that are certified for property tax relief annually by the state.
Any questions for Mr. Perry?
Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last of the agenda items. I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
I'll motion to adjourn and ask for a five-minute recess in between for restroom break.
Absolutely. Need a second. Second, John. First, Mark. And everybody has five minutes for bathroom break. All right, I will call to order the Franklin Regional School Board Director's regular meeting on Monday, June 17, 2024. We will now stand to salute the flag.
Delisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement. We, the Franklin Regional School community strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do. I want to announce we were in executive session prior to the meeting today from 6:30 to 7:30 for legal, contractual, and personal obligations. Ms. Wolf, roll call, please.
Mr. Phallett?
Present.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Zebrecht?
Here.
Mrs. Bucera?
Here.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Here.
Mr. Wyman?
Here.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Here.
Mr. Krimsky?
Here.
Thank you. I need an approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes for May 13th, as well as the regular meeting minutes for May 13th, 2024. John, in a second.
Second.
Second. Scott? Any objections or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass is eight zero. I now need a motion, oh, I'm sorry, future dates. Dr. Prino.
So August 7, 2024, we will have a policy committee meeting at 6:00 PM at the meeting and the regular board meeting is, meeting at 7:30 here at the Murraysville Municipal Boden. Upcoming topics include personnel, annual agreements, gifts, grants, and donations, and policy review. And that concludes upcoming topics and future dates.
Thank you, Dr. Prino. Now I need a motion to approve the list of bills for June 2024.
I moved.
Scott?
Second mark.
Second mark. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, also need an approval for the treasures report for May 2024.
I moved.
Scott, second.
Second.
Vince, hearing any comments or objections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we will move on to public comments. And first up is Kristi Trautman.
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name's Kristi Trautman. I live at 4043 Sloanwood Drive, Murraysville. I'm here to talk about the vote you'll be taking in a few minutes about the new director. As I have been attending meetings for some time, the majority of your business is straightforward. The majority of your votes are unanimous. So where leadership comes in is where there's disagreement. And I've really been impressed by the times that you have been at your best as leaders for this district, where you have listened to concerns from the community, where you've really leaned on the expertise of our superintendent and our considerably impressive administrative team, where you've taken the best interests of our students and our families in, in consideration in making decisions that are for the best of the future of this district and all of our students. So obviously, you all know, I'm on Team Amy Sheridan. You know what her credentials are. You know how he, she has shown up. You know why I support her. My really ask tonight is that you bring the best of yourselves as leaders and the best of the ways that you work together to find common ground, to choose a really important ninth seat on this board for the future of the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Helen Elliott.
Helen Elliott, 3166 Chestnut Street in Murraysville. After going through the first meeting, I have some questions. So on page 35, which is real confusing to me because I don't do well with all these numbers. But I'm just kind of curious. I don't understand where some of these things, whether they're the cost and the percentage for the whole school, or are they individual, are they per person costs? So that's my question on page 35. On page 53, is there a cost to dispose of the chemistry textbooks? No? Wonderful, because I was going to offer to burn them in my fire pit if there was. And on page 54, let me see. Okay, so is there any student data involved in this frontline analytics program, personal information, et cetera? I didn't quite hear that clarity in the answer. So that's my question on page 54. And then I would just like to reiterate that I am here in support of Dave Murphy, and I have the highest regard for him. And his number of votes in the general election says the community wanted him in place right after Herb, so let's do that. I am also in agreement with Mrs. Ling's statement on the transparency. I don't know what the policy is. I mean, Mr. Wyman can probably give me the numbers of the, of the, in the books or whatever that tells what the policy is for that. But I do agree that there should be more transparency on that. But I am in support of Dave Murphy. I have some reservations because I'm concerned that in the past years, watching some things going on, that, that this is kind of a good old boy's decision and maybe was decided in that regard. And I hope that's not the case. So thank you very much. Good night.
Dr. Delp, maybe, could you maybe just reiterate what you said before about the personal data, what's required of us? I know you mentioned it before. I'm sorry.
Absolutely. There is no personally identifiable information. All of this information is public information that if you wanted to go out to the PDE website, and it could actually spend hours and be quite cumbersome to try to find all of this data, whether it's assessment data, PSSA, Keystone's, or whether it is budgetary information, all of this information can be found as public information. So it will not come back to any individualized. It's all aggregated data, collective data that cannot be broken down by any personally identifiable information.
Also, while, while we're talking, can I address the heritage piece? Because that's actually, I definitely want to get that information out there. They are behind schedule. We have addressed that with the company, our concerns about the lack of progress. I too have noticed that there are days that go by where no one's on site. And obviously, that's a point of frustration. I wish I had an update on that and could tell you that by June, supposed to be gone and planted by June 15th. Where that day's come and gone. I wish I could promise you by July 1, but we will be following the, the points of that. And so I've already had, began to have conversations with Gary Matta, as well as the architect in terms of what that looks like, so.
What's the, what's the latest up? Have they given any update? If you're behind schedule, usually you reach out and say.
Well, it's, to be quite honest with you, I think it's a staffing. It's multiple jobs and it's a personnel issue. It's having, freeing, right now, we're in the summer and they're out doing other, other jobs that, that need, where it needs to be nice, which isn't, I, so.
Thanks for addressing that.
I wish I had more answers because your questions are my questions, so.
All right, next, Kimberly Birch.
Hi, Dr. Kimberly Birch, 401 Chelsted Way. Also here to just weigh in on what is going to be a huge decision for all to somehow replace the irreplaceable Herb Bingling that must be done. We hope this is done in the best interest of our students regardless of how we vote. And that, to me, is the utmost concern because I still have two students in our district and I think the world of our district and our students. And I see Amy here all the time, right, at these meetings. When you zoom in, you see Amy. I volunteer with a marching band. You see Amy. The robotics that you have mentioned and we're so excited, you know, Amy is critically involved with that. She is brilliant and would lend so much of her expertise and her open mindness to this board. And I would hope that that is remembered. Again, she is here. When I am asked to write recommendations for my students, if they are not in my classes, you know, they don't get that letter of rec. Right? That is, when I'm asked to do something for my students to extend a deadline, I don't take attendance, but I know who's there. I see. Amy is always where she needs to be. So I would throw my support as well for Amy Sheridan to somehow replace the irreplaceable Herb Bingling.
Thank you. That is the end of public comments. I'm actually going to go back and make a correction on my own self. I did not read the list of bills for June 2024, so I'm going to read those now and then we'll go through those. So paid bills, general fund, $694,065.81. Capital reserve fund of $2,800. Athletic fund of $3,588.95 for a total paid bills of $700,454.76. Unpaid bills, general fund, $992,327.32. Capital reserve fund of $94,622.90. Athletic fund of $36,578.42 for a total of unpaid bills of $1,123,528.64. For a grand total, $1,823,983.40. Food services, $155,853.53. Grand total, including food services, $1,979,836.93. So with that, I will, we did approve those bills, but I wanted to make sure they were on the record and for the public as I read them. Any objections at this point for what I just read? Solicitor comments?
No comments unless anybody has any questions tonight.
Mr. Solicitor, could you please explain the process, the state's process, or the code for replacing a school board director?
So essentially, there's not much of a process other than the fact that you guys are slated with filling that position within 30 days. And then without filling that position within 30 days, it would go to the Westmoreland County Courts. And the president judge would convene with the other sitting judges and they would make that selection. But prior to that, there's no rules, regulations as to how the school board or school district should go about that process. It's just left up to you eight.
Additional questions on that?
No, thank you. If you weren't already planning to do.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Josh. So what we're going to do is we will open up the floor for school directors. I will open the floor for nominations. As we continue to get nominations, I will continue to read it until all the nominate, I've read it through twice and not received any additional nominations. At that particular point in time, we will vote in order based on who was nominated in that order, from first to second to third and so forth. And then we will go through a roll call vote of, for that. If a majority is met, then we will move on and that particular person will become the next person on the school board. If a majority is not met, we will go to the next person in line and so forth, all the way through. If there is no majority met, and as the solicitor mentioned, it will go, if we're not making a decision by the end of the month, then we will, it will actually go to the judges to make an appointment. Thank you. Any questions on that from the board?
Can you tell us who's in the running right now or we have to?
Well, they have to be nominated. The board has to nominate who. Yes, not, the board will nominate, and as of now, I will open up the floor for open positions of the school director position. Are there?
I nominate David Murphy.
Okay, so with the nomination of David Murphy, is there a nominee or is there any other nominations for appointment of school board?
I nominate Deb Willeen.
Okay, Deb Willeen, by Scott. Tracy for Dave Murphy. Is there nominated or any other nominations for appointment of school director?
I nominate Amy Sheridan.
Amy Sheridan from Mark. Is there a nominated or any other nominations for the appointment of school director? Are there any other nominations for the appointment of school director? Hearing no other nominations, the nominations for the appointment of school director is closed. And we will move forward to, for a motion to vote on multiple candidates. I need a, a mo, we'll start with Dave Murphy. And Ms. Wolf will go to a vote on Dave Murphy for school board director. Do we need a motion to?
They're, they're already on there, so he's. They're already on there, so he's moving on.
Motion, but no second.
Yeah, there's no second on the nomination.
Just wanted to make sure we were in the right...
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Phallett?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
No.
Mr. Zebrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Bucera?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
No.
Mr. Kozlowski?
No.
Mr. Krimsky?
No.
So, we'll move on to the second candidate?
So, we'll move on to the second candidate. Deb Willeen, and I need another roll call vote for Deb Willeen for school board director.
Mr. Phallett?
No.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Zebrock?
No.
Mrs. Bucera?
No.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Yes.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Five three.
So, five three. So, with a majority vote, Deb Willeen will be...we will get with the magistrate and get her sworn in, and she will be the next or the ninth member of the school board. And we can do that at the July meeting potentially. We don't have to schedule by the end of the month in order to swear in.
She wouldn't even need to be sworn in before you guys. She could do so with the magistrate.
Okay. Thank you.
So, hopefully, ideally, she would be sat for the July or, I guess, August.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So, moving on, we're going to move on to consent agenda motions. Is there any consent agenda items that need to be removed for a separate action by the board, members of the board?
I'd like to remove item 14.
Okay. Remove item 14 for Mark. Any other items that want to be removed? So, I'm going to...I need a motion to approve consent agenda items one through 13. Motion. Josh? I need a second. Vince? Any comments? Hearing none. And I'll open the floor of removal 14.
I simply removed item 14. I would be required...I would want to abstain from that vote.
Okay. Very good. So, we'll vote on 14 on the personnel agenda. I need a motion for approval. Vince? Second John. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And one abstain. All right. We will now move...I'm sorry. Please, go ahead.
With...I just want to take a moment to introduce to the public, we have our new director of facilities with us, Mr. Brian Johnson.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Johnson is coming to us from Woodland Hills in the...from the same position, but he also lives in our community, has children in our school district, and throughout the interview process demonstrated his commitment to the success of the district and the role that facilities play in the success of students. So, welcome.
Looking forward to getting aboard.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to the roll call agenda items. I need to...for the first one is for the general fund budget. Ms. Wolf? I need...first, we need a motion for approval. Motion. Josh, second.
Second.
Vince. Ms. Wolf, can we go to the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Phallett?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Zebrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Bucera?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
No.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Yes.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay. And I need a motion to approve the Homestead and Farmstead exclusion resolution. Motion. Josh, Vince, second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Phallett?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Zebrock?
Yes.
Mrs. Bucera?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Kozlowski?
Yes.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right. I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Josh, second.
Second.
Vince? Good night, everyone. Thank you.